Okay.
It's only Coke, man.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call together the study session for the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 4th, 2019. We will start off our meeting with citizen comment on agenda items. I had no one signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak on any agenda item? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will move to the first item of business. And this is the city treasurer candidate presentations. City Treasurer Jerry DeTulio was elected to office of Jefferson County Treasurer on November 6th, 2018. Mr. DeTulio resigned as city treasurer effective midnight on January 7th, 2019. In an order to fill the vacancy of the city treasurer, prospective candidates were invited to present to the city council during the February 4th, 2019 study session, and that is tonight. We have two candidates that are here for our consideration. Mr. Miller and Mr. Stites. And in a nod to the, to the Super Bowl, we had a coin toss before the, tonight's presentation. And Mr. Miller won the toss and elected to go second. So our first presenter tonight is Mr. Corey Stites. Mr. Stites, if you'll join us at the table. And please, whenever you're ready, start your presentation, and then we will leave some time for questions by the, by the council. So, continue.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. As most of you know, I'm a longtime resident and a lifelong, born and raised member of this community. I was born and raised in Wheat Ridge. My grandfather was mayor. At one point, my, my father was city councilman, so you could say that politics in Wheat Ridge is in my DNA. When I was growing up in Wheat Ridge, I went to Color Strand, to Everett, graduated from Wheat Ridge High School, went on to UNC up in Greeley. That's where I met my wife, Sarah. Graduated from Metro State University with a degree in business, or, I'm sorry, a degree in history, a minor in business. I then went on to get my master's degree in organizational leadership and development. For the last few years, I would like to be able to claim that I'm a lifelong resident of Wheat Ridge, but I'm not. I spent a few years in Greeley in school. I got the opportunity to own my first home in Westminster, moved up to Arvada, and kind of my lifelong dream, raise my family here in Wheat Ridge. So, for the last three or four years, my family's been here in Wheat Ridge. Recently, we were able to purchase my parents' house, so we're actually raising my family in the same house that my kids grew up in. I'd start kindergarten at Color Strand next year, where I started, so I'm pretty excited about that. For the last nine or 10 years, almost 10 years, I've owned personal achievement martial arts here in Wheat Ridge. We invest heavily back into the community. We raise money for the schools every year. We participate in the Carnation Festival, almost all of the local works, different festivals, things like that, the Criterium, Ridge Fest. Abilities that we have to get back into the community and invest in our community, that's what we want to do. In 2017, we were Local Works's Community Builder of the Year. In 2018, we were the Carnation Festival's Best Business Entry for their parade. In 2018, we were also voted, and we humbly accepted, the award for Best Business in Wheat Ridge. So that was a big feather on a cap. We've worked really hard to achieve that, that status, and that's something that we want to continue to give back to the community with. We were also voted Best Business Award for the, one of the local magazines, one of the local parent magazines. One of the other ways I give back to the community is I'm the moderator for, and many of you guys have seen, the local Facebook groups, which keeps me pretty busy, but the Wheat Ridge Neighbors Group has close to 6,000 members, the Politics Group, just over 400, Buy/Sell/Swap is close to 4,000 members, and Shop Local Wheat Ridge, which is a page that I manage for the local business community, is close to 800 members as well. So, through that community and through those interactions that I have, I'm able to have interactions with thousands of people in our community and the communities surrounding it. And that shapes a lot of what goes on in the city, city politics, because I've heard several times during the city council meetings, comments on Facebook, different things mentioned. So that is a big part of our, our government and our, our society today. Officially, one of the ways that I, I've given back to the community is some of the boards and things that I've served on. I was on Mayor Joyce J.'s Citizen Outreach Committee. We helped to improve communications between the citizens and, and the city. I spent a year on the Wheat Ridge Water District Board. And through that, I was able to see how not quite a government agency, but a, a public utility invests its money and does its accounting. So, that's very similar to how Wheat Ridge and, and the city government does its accounting as well. I was on the Jefferson County School Board Wheat Ridge Articulation Area Funding Committee, which we came up with a strategy for the articulation area as a whole, including one of, my subcommittee was working on funding for the, the many outcomes of that committee. Recently, I was added to the Wheat Ridge Business District Board. I served with many of you on that as well. But we invest back in the community, giving grants, things like that, to other businesses. And I'm also one of the co-chairs for the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Committee that's currently working. Through that, I'm working with 26 of the other community members that were picked by council to come up with our significant impact and to prioritize for our resources for the next few years. As many of you know, because I own personal achievement martial arts, I grew up in the martial arts, something I've done for about 30 years. I'm a 6'3" black belt. Through the martial arts, I've learned accountability, discipline, confidence, leadership. I love training physically, but one of the things I love doing is teaching and being able to give back and lead in my community, as well as in my business community, through the ways that we are able to give back to schools and to our, our communities as a whole. One of the things that I've been able to do because of my martial arts training is step into failing martial arts schools. One of the reasons that I went to UNC but graduated from Metro is my junior year of college, I was asked by the owner of one of the largest chains in Colorado to step into a school that had 20 members, was about to go out of business. Within a year, at 20 years old, I was able to take that business from 20 to 250 students. Within a year from that, I was able to sell that school, because I implemented the business systems, accounting, and I was able to raise the revenues of that school. And then I was able to implement those same systems in multiple other schools throughout Colorado. Not just teaching, but also the accounting systems, the business systems, and the management systems to make sure that those schools were successful as startups or as failing schools that I was able to turn around. Now, as the owner of personal achievement martial arts, I use those skills to monitor the day-to-day finances, the bookkeeping, the accounting, and the reports, and I'm able to manage my team of instructors and our office workers to make sure that all of that is, is handled. As far as my interest in the treasurer position, I see the treasurer position as a position that's there for accountability, for management, for leadership, for communication, and for transparency. I don't see it as an elected accounting position. It's not, they're not responsible, the treasurer is not responsible, I'm sorry, for the day-to-day accounting, for the bookkeeping. They're not the city controller or comptroller, they're not a city accountant. What they are there to do is to provide a check and balance for the citizens. That's why it's an elected position, so the treasurer answers to council and to the voters. They're there to make sure that the funds are dispersed correctly, the funds are invested appropriately to make sure that the citizens get the best return on investment, and to bring a voice of the citizens into the discussion when it comes to finances for the city. That's something that I do on a day-to-day basis, running a business, making sure that all of those things happen, and that's something that I would continue on to do as treasurer. One of the duties of treasurer is to be the hearing officer when it comes to sales and use tax discrepancies and sales and use tax protests from businesses. When I was meeting with many of the citizens and many of the council people preparing for this, something that was said to me over and over again was my strength as somebody who can make judgments, stick by those judgments, have reasonable decisions for those judgments, and despite public opinion, stand by those judgments. That's something that I would continue to do as treasurer. Make sure that as Facebook moderator, as a business owner, and as a teacher, I've had to do that in the past. That's something I am comfortable being able to step in and do, even in a emotionally tense situation like the break the stigma, or break the stigma fitness situation that Treasurer DeTulio had to deal with a few months ago. After the election, Treasurer DeTulio reached out to me, because he thought I would be a good fit for the position. He has been able to implement several systems that I feel need to continue on, but there are things that he wasn't able to do. Couple of things that he mentioned that I looked into that I, I feel would be important over the next couple of months, would be to work on projects like getting rid of the lockbox system that we currently have to collect sales tax. So, streamlining that to an online system. And then to help establish parameters for some sort of a lodging tax when it comes to Airbnbs. That's not something we currently have, but that's something that, we do have a lodging tax, but it doesn't apply to Airbnbs. One of the things that I do see that he implemented that we need to continue is the transparency from the office, making sure that the citizens are informed of all financial decisions, making sure the council's informed of all financial decisions. And that's something I would really like to continue on as treasurer. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stites. We'll open it up to council for questions. Don't all raise your hand at one time. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Urban. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Matthews.
I'm going to assume that you have gone over Section 3.1 of the Charter, which is Duties of the Treasurer.
Yes, sir.
Is there something there that you find either really good or really bad or lacking or that you think should be changed?
That's a good question. I actually think that it's appropriate for the elected treasurer to have a narrow scope of duties that don't tie too deeply, because you may or may not get somebody who's a financial expert or anything like that, that's been, been talked about several times, I believe. Because it's an elected position, and because we don't have requirements as far as education and let that go, I think that these requirements right now are appropriate for the position as it is.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stites, for being here. One of the questions I had was related to what you said earlier about the difference between the, the staff accounting of the operations of the city and the, the role of the treasurer. And so, how do you see the, the role of the treasurer being different from the staff accounting?
Absolutely. And I went over that pretty quickly in my presentation, but the staff accountants are responsible for the internal accounting for the, for the city. So, staff accountants are responsible for the debits, the credits, the, the general accounting, making sure that the balance sheets, that sort of thing is, is correct. The treasurer is more of an outside finance person, so somebody who's going to secure lines of credit, somebody who's going to be looking for better investments for the city. So, that's a little bit different than what an accountant would do. So, as somebody who's a business owner, that's something I'm constantly doing, looking for places to invest money. And like I said, while I was on the waterboard, that was something that I had the opportunity to see those government-type accounts and that government accounting, which maybe I wasn't familiar with just being in the private sector, if that makes sense.
Additional questions? Ms. Davis.
So, thanks for being here, because I know, being on the hot seat's no fun. And I also appreciate all that you do, because I think you do a lot in the community, and you're, you're definitely out there a lot. So, I have just a couple of questions. So, in, in your work with, with some of the businesses, and I think picking up from some of the businesses, do you feel like a lot of the growth with some of your businesses, do you feel a lot of that was more from a marketing perspective or more from identifying through an audit perspective, business issues through audit and money issues, that type of thing?
Sure. Well, that makes sense. The answer is it depends. If, if a martial arts school, say, has 20 students, and you need about 100 students to survive, obviously you just need more students, that's a marketing gap. If a school that has 150 students can't, and a lot of revenue coming in, can't figure out why it can't pay its bills every month, then that's an accounting issue. So, I've been able to look at both. Being able, you know, if it's a marketing issue, that's easy to fix. Sometimes accounting issues are a little harder to fix, because sometimes that means reducing employees, sometimes that means, you know, reducing rent and moving to a different place. So whatever that is, it's, it's having those right formulas to make that work. So, I, I think the answer's both. But I think it's important to make sure that the finances are correct in any business, because it doesn't matter what your product is, if your finances aren't correct, you're going to go out of business.
So now, do you currently do your own accounting, or do you send it out and then review?
We do our own accounting in-house. We do have an accountant that does our taxes and our, our payroll and payroll taxes, things like that. But obviously, that's something that I audit. I don't do the general bookkeeping for the school all on my own, that's something that we share, my wife and I. But it's something that, any of the reports are something that we both look at, make sure that we scour, and make sure if there's places that we need to solve that, we do.
So, I, I think, you know, I think one of the things that I think we talk about, and I think when I've talked to folks about, you know, this position, and as, as you know, there's not a lot of folks that, not a lot of cities who have an elected treasurer position. And, and the folks that feel passionate about it feel that, oh, well, we need the general oversight. You know, so the, the accounting principles and, and the knowledge of accounting principles is important to have, because I think that that's where you'd find, from a staffing perspective, you'd be, you'd have to know that. So, are you real comfortable with general accounting principles to, to be able to see and, and review the staffing's work in that perspective?
I think that I'm, I mean, I've taken accounting classes, I've had that opportunity to review that, both, you know, in my current business and following businesses before. And I, you know, being on boards, I've sat through treasurer's reports and things like that. General accounting principles, yes. If there's things that I don't know, I mean, I will ask, and I will, you know, make sure that I follow up and solve any, any issues that are there. General, you know, I'm not a financial auditor, but, you know, I don't believe that that's what the treasurer position also calls for. The city has its own auditors and has outside agencies to do that. Again, this is the way I see it and the way, you know, when I speak to citizens about the treasurer position, it's more looking for those investments and making sure that the money is, is, yes, the accounting is there, but making sure that those numbers are reported to the citizens and to the council, and make sure that those numbers are accurate.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it is a bullet in 3.1, but I agree. I mean, I think being an elected official, I mean, you know, again, it's an elected official, so, I mean, necessarily is that going to be someone who's always elected with that kind of background? You never know. But, I mean, it is one of the functions.
So, I mean, certainly you would hope that somebody who's applying or somebody who wants to run for that would have that knowledge, definitely.
Additional, additional questions? I had one, Mr. Stites. This, this term is to, is to fill a vacancy on the, on the, the office that is, ends in November. Have you formulated an opinion as to whether, if you were appointed to this position, you would run, run in November?
As I said at the beginning of my presentation, Wheat Ridge and politics in Wheat Ridge is in my DNA. So, yes, I do intend to be on the ballot in November, whether it's for the treasurer position or a different position, I'm not sure. But I do intend to be on the ballot in November.
Okay, thank you. Are there additional questions for Mr. Stites at this time? All right, Mr. Stites, thank you very much for joining us. And we will now go to our next candidate, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, please come to the, come to the table, and when you're ready, you may begin
Oh, hand out. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, mayors of the, of members of the council, for the opportunity to come tonight and present my application for the city treasurer position. Next slide, please. My, a little bit about me, my personal background. I'm originally from Las Vegas, Nevada. I moved to Colorado in 1993. My parents were from Colorado, moved back here with my mom, and I grew up in Commerce City. I graduated from Bellevue Christian High School in Westminster. It's up on Federal and 50th. It's that big red castle building, you may have seen it around town. I have an undergraduate degree in business, double majored in accounting and finance. I really liked University of Colorado Denver, so I stuck around and I got a double master's degree also in accounting and finance. I moved to Wheat Ridge in 2006 with my partner. He and I have lived there in District 3 in the Applewood Villages neighborhood for about 13 years now. My professional experience includes time at the state of Colorado, and I've spent most of my professional career working for the sitting county of Denver. And I'll talk more about that a little bit later. My community involvement includes volunteering at various aspects and organized events for the sitting county of Denver. They organize events for employees to volunteer, and I've done things such as graffiti mitigation, neighborhood cleanup, painting houses for senior citizens and so forth. Locally, I contribute, or I'm involved in the community by volunteering as the treasurer of the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival. I'm on the board. I've done that since 2017. Next slide, please. So my employment experience, for the most part, that's relevant to this position, is at the sitting county of Denver. I've worked there for 13 years, about the same time I moved to Wheat Ridge is when I got the job there. I spent five years in the Department of Revenue. I worked in the Treasury Division as a staff accountant, a senior financial management analyst, and in the Controller's Office as an accounting supervisor. I spent six years in the Department of Public Works in the Program Resource Office. That's similar to a program controls office or a program resource office. Last week, I noticed that you all voted for, to approve budget for those services for AECOM. So in Denver, we have an office that does that internally for projects. We also outsource some of those services for the bond projects as well. So very similar to what you're doing here in Wheat Ridge. And for the last two years, I have been the Agency Controller for Denver Arts and Venues. This picture right here is the McNichols Building, it's one of our venues in Denver. And when I started working at the city, this was the Treasury Building, and that's the first building I worked at. Next slide. I'd like to tell you a little bit about my experience and some of the positions, I think it's relevant to this position. I started off as a staff accountant in the city county of Denver. My first job was reconciling all the city's bank accounts, and let me tell you, haven't lived till you reconciled the DMV bank account. It was a great learning experience, I got to learn a lot about the city and how the city works just by seeing all the cash transactions. You really learn a lot by looking at cash. It's much better than looking through the trash. Part of my jobs there was to review and approve journal entries that was made by the accounting technician. A lot of the treasury activity I became familiar with, such as debt service payments, bank transfers between the city's various bank accounts, we had a concentration structure there. I reviewed investment transactions, the city's buys and sells, because we have our own investment management team that manages our city portfolios. One of my accomplishments there was developing new procedures to automate transactions and look for errors and such. There was lots of opportunity for improvement, kind of walked into a mess and cleaned it up. A little bit later, I got another position, I was promoted to a senior financial management analyst in the Treasury Division. This team worked on primarily the cash management of the city. We managed things such as the banking activities, the cash handling and cashiering for the city. My, my duties include reviewing banking activity, positive pay exceptions, that's a banking product to make sure that all the checks that are written to the city, or written by the city, are cashed by the appropriate person for the appropriate amount and so forth. It's very important, I hope that you all use that product here. I worked as a liaison between the bank and the city departments as far as banking resolved issues, reached out to the bank and just made corrections, initiated all, all the city's ACH and wire transactions for things like debt service payments and other city operational transactions, and did a lot of analysis and cash forecasting in that position as well. About this time, those Denver voters initiated a change in the city charter to combine a few departments within Denver and create the Department of Finance, before it was Department of Revenue slash the Treasury Department. When that happened, I moved over to the Controller's Office. My background in accounting and just having worked there for quite a bit, I, I got promoted again to an accounting supervisor position in the City Controller's Office. It was great, because it was a lot of the work that I had done before, so I was supervising people that had worked in the positions that I previously held. My duties included reviewing citywide bank journal entries for proper backup authorization, making sure that we followed general accounting principles. I still supervise the transactions related to the Treasury Department, things like bank reconciliations, property tax receipts, sales tax receipts, and all the distributions, Denver's a city and a county, so we collect not only sales tax, but also property taxes and make those various distributions. Internally, sales taxes are distributed to different funds, similar to Wheat Ridge's to E-funds, and I managed various balance sheet accounts just associated with the management of the Treasury transactions. One of the big accomplishments I had in this role is I developed many procedures that would automate transactions, that would upload journal entries, accounting journal entries to the city's general ledger using Access and Excel. I didn't have to go out and hire a consultant to help me do it, I just kind of rolled at my sleeves, figured out how to do it, and it really helped a lot as far as a couple people retired and we didn't need to replace them, or didn't need to replace them to do get entry anymore, they, we replaced them doing something else, or we filled the positions for other purposes. And as also part of this job, my duty was to do the accounting for the city's investment portfolio. I would make sure that all of the city's transactions with respect to our buys and sales of investments were recorded. I was supervising a person that did that, automated the reporting system, and I have an example of the report that I do, I did at the next page, this is the city and counties of Denver's investment report from September 2011. This report is something that I personally, I didn't invent it, but I drastically improved it. I inherited it from somebody, so I kind of improved the processes by which all these numbers are calculated. There's several spreadsheets in the backgrounds, lots of funds that kind of point to certain places in order to allocate funds and distribute the funds to citywide. Denver really loves our funds, we have hundreds of them, because we break them up. So, pointing all those funds to the right place in order to allocate investment earnings is really important. So, they all kind of culminated into this spreadsheet. Just wanted to share that with you as an example of some of the work I've done. After I worked in the Department of Finance, I took an opportunity to work in the city's Department of Public Works, where I worked in the Program Resource Office. As I said before, it's similar to a project controls office. There I became exposed to the city's to the city's bond program. We do lots of bonds, bond projects. In 2008, the city of Denver issued $550 million face value of bonds. And we need to implement all those into about 200-plus projects. So my job during that time was to help manage those projects as far as where they were with respect to the time, the schedule, whether they're on budget or not budget, and report up to management as far as how well they were doing and whether or not they should utilize contingency and so forth in order to get the projects done. I collaborated with lots of consultants at that time in order to build a legacy bond project reporting system. Actually, it's a project reporting system. So before that, we didn't have a good system, one place where we kind of tracked all the projects and their process and their progress. So we use that system extensively, and it's still used to this day. Also, in Public Works, we have a $90 million annual appropriation for just maintenance. And I helped all of the various groups within Public Works identify where that goes. So think about things like street striping, replacing faded signs, the rotamale on overlay of the various streets in Denver, maintenance for our wastewater infrastructure, things like that. One of the things that I did was to help work with our project managers to try to translate lists of projects into potential debt issuances. One thing a municipality doesn't want to do is issue debt too early in the process because it's just too expensive. So one of my jobs was to translate the projected schedules of those projects into cash flows. So I worked with project managers to identify when they thought the design portion or the construction portion would start and anticipate the cash flows, shared that information with the Treasury, and then they would use that to decide when the best time to go to market is for various tranches of debt. After the debt is issued, I would track those tranches of debt and debt issuances. The next page right here is an example of a report that I put together for the wastewater 2012 bond. We used about -- we issued about 1.5 -- I'm sorry. $31.5 million worth of debt to do various projects within the city and county of Denver. These projects are, for the most part, stormwater conveyance projects. It gave project managers and executive management a snapshot of where the program was at the time, various levels of encumbrance, spend, change orders. Here's a snapshot of the schedule, specific project activity. And on the back, this is a scheduled performance curve. The top one is the overall performance of the program, and on the bottom, the performance of the individual projects that kind of add up to the whole program. This was important because there's bond covenants with respect to when debt issuers should be spent down by. If a municipality issues debt, it can't hold on to it for, let's say, 15 years. You have to spin it down within a certain amount of time. If not, you're in violation of debt covenants. So this helped identify where we were with meeting those covenants and just overall management of the projects themselves. Next slide. This slide talks about my experience as the Agency Controller of Denver Arts and Venues. I started there about two years ago, a little bit less than that. Denver's Arts and Venues owns and operates many of the venues across the city, including Red Rocks Amphitheater, Denver Coliseum, the venues at the Denver Performing Arts Complex, including the Eli Cockens Opera House, the Beale Theater, and Badger Concert Hall where the Colorado Symphony plays. We also maintain the McNichols Building on that picture that I showed before. And we operate -- we own the Colorado Convention Center. It's actually managed by an outside company, though. We welcome more than 2 million guests to our venues and hold over 1,400 events annually. Denver's Arts and Venues is operated with a special revenue fund. We have a $55 million annual revenue budget and over a $40 million operating budget for expenses. In addition to that, we also have a $3 to $5 million capital program, which we use to maintain our venues. That's funded primarily by seat tax. My job in all of that is to ensure that all of those revenues and expenditures are accounted for with respect to generally accepted accounting principles, the city fiscal rules. We need to follow procurement rules with respect to what services we procure can't be over a certain amount. Once we hit a threshold, we have to go to a contract. We just can't issue a P.O., let's say, for $1 million. We need to procure them in an open and transparent way. Next slide, please. So the arts part of Denver Arts and Venues is the city's public art program. We've done a lot of projects, especially associated with debt issuance. I think that even Wheat Ridge, we have a percent for public art program. That is funded -- those art pieces are funded by a portion of the construction budget of various projects across the city. But the special revenue fund itself funds the administration of that and the maintenance and so forth. We also have an urban arts fund. That's a graffiti prevention program and a youth development program. We put various murals across the city in an attempt to discourage graffiti and cultural -- increase the cultural aspects of some areas of the city. It's been a really big success, and people actually absolutely love a lot of our murals. We also do placemaking grants across the city. We go into a neighborhood and identify a place that can be a little bit more economically depressed and try to add art into it, use it, see if that can change the dynamics of a neighborhood and so forth. It's a really great program, and we've seen lots of good successes of this around the Rhino area and in the Santa Fe district as well. And another program that we've done is the Aiwee animal zodiac heads. Maybe you've seen them in Civic Center Park around the Voorhees Fountain. So that's an example of some of the work that the arts portion of Denver Arts and Venues does. What's great about it is that we use all of the revenues and excess funding from our venues to fund the arts program that may not otherwise be funded. So that's how we fund these really great programs. Next slide, please. Here, I talk about why I want to be the treasurer. As I shared, I'm a longtime public sector employee. This is what I do, and I really enjoy doing it. And I would like to continue to do it, and I think that I would do well and excel in this role here. My -- I think that my background would allow me to come up to speed really quickly, be effective, and add value to the position and help the city. I think that I could really provide the oversight that's assigned by the city charter. Some of the questions earlier were about whether, you know, this person is the accountant or so forth. I agree, this person is not the city's accountant. But I do think it's important for them to understand at least some of the transactions that are going on in order to interpret whether or not they're reasonable or not with respect to investments, bank activity, cash transactions, and so forth. Another reason why, as I live here too, I'm part of this community, and I want to give back. I've looked for volunteer opportunities. It was something that encouraged me to come be part of the Carnation Festival. And I think that this is just another opportunity for me to give back to the community, but also in an area that I think that I've got some experience with. So I think I can do well in this position. Next slide, please. I have a lot of things here, kind of like how my approach to this position would be. I've broken down into kind of a short and a midterm. Long term is a little bit to be determined. I think I'd have to get into the position and understand a little bit more before I could say what my long-term specific goals are. But I think that in the first 30 days of, if I were to be given this position, I would look at things like building a relationship with the city team, understand their culture, how things work, understand their financial systems, get a good idea of how business is done here in the city. I'd like to gain understanding of the city's fund structure and accounting structure. I think that that knowledge would help me review transactions and become a little bit more knowledgeable of how the city works and just have a general understanding. I'm an accountant by training, so that's where I go to. I look at things like journal entries, debits and credits. And I'm really familiar, having done all those bank reconciliations and review and so forth of Treasury transactions. I think that's the first place I would look. Back to the cash inflows and outflows. Like I said before, you learn a lot. So I'd really look at those items. I think first and foremost, I'd look at the city's investments to make sure that they're aligned with the city's investment policy and also with the PDA, Public Depository Protection Act, just to ensure that we are where we think we are as far as our investments go, and they're in the appropriate place. For example, we wouldn't want to keep a $1 million balance in an FDIC account if it's not insured above and beyond what would be done by the federal government. And I would like to continue the reports done by the previous treasurer as well. I also talked to Jerry DiTullio about the job. He recommended to take a look at the lockbox. So to echo what Corey said, I think that a lockbox analysis would be in order as far as identifying opportunities to reduce costs. In Denver, we do such volume that we actually pushed our transactions over to the lockbox because it ended up saving money rather than doing it in-house. They were able to do certain things like take images of all the documentation and so forth, expedite the cash and so forth. So it just depends on what's going on here, whether or not it's a good idea or not. But I definitely take that advice, take a look at it. Mr. DiTullio also mentioned that there was an opportunity in order to establish a process for the short-term lodgers tax. I'll be honest, I don't know a heck of a lot about that. I think it's something, an opportunity for me to learn about, but I definitely want to work with the city's tax division to gain a better understanding of how they intend to audit that. And I have a lot of resources and persons that I have known over the years in Denver that I can really rely on to help me identify the best principles. I think that Denver just initiated a rather large program for both licensing and tax collection on short-term rentals. It's kind of the new world we live in. I think that there are some opportunities for improvements in the financial reporting. As I understand it, Mr. DiTullio was the first person, or maybe to put them out on the website. I think that there are some opportunities to display that same data in a more dashboard setting that may provide a little bit better insight to the general public and decision-makers about the overall rate of collection of sales tax. And I think my next step would be to identify ways that I could report back out to the citizens and check in with city council and the city manager on a regular basis in order to report out my progress. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller, just in the nick of time, I guess. Thank you. And we will open for questions from council. Do we have some questions from Mr. Miller? Mr. Keeter.
Thank you. I don't necessarily have any concepts in mind, but do you see any potential conflicts with working for Denver in the financial area and being responsible for Wheat Ridge's finances?
I reached out to -- Denver has a Board of Ethics, and I asked them to evaluate the situation. We had a meeting, and they asked some questions about what information would be privy to and so forth. They didn't have any concerns. They thought that my role as the Agency Controller of Arts and Venues was far enough removed from the transactions of a treasurer in Wheat Ridge, that they didn't say any concerns. But I recommended that I make sure that I talk to my supervisor if anything would ever come up about specific transactions. So it's something that I would be cognizant of and work with both my supervisor in Denver but also with the city attorney and here in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. I'm interested here, since you do have extensive experience in the public sector, have you taken a look at our charter and the duties of the treasurer? And do you view them as being adequate? Or do they seem to fit what is -- your conception of what a city treasurer should have responsibilities for?
I did take a look at the charter. And one thing that I was taken aback by a little bit was the provision saying the charter would establish an accounting system per generally accepted accounting principles. That is a very broad topic. So one thing that I think could be improved upon there would -- to identify the specifics of what exactly that means. As I understood it, I spoke with Mr. DiTullio, and he said that at one point there were city staff that actually reported up to the treasurer, and that language may be reminiscent from that time as far as the city staff reporting up to that person. I think that it's very broad as far as what those duties are, and it should be identified. It seems like things have changed now that these employees report to the city manager. So maybe an update may be in order. That's the biggest one that I kind of have concerns about as far as what exactly the treasurer does. I think it'd be better defined. The other things, as far as what the treasurer does as far as city investments, that's kind of right on as far as what you traditionally see the Treasury Department doing. Perhaps something more on the lines of banking would be appropriate. I'd be concerned if, like, city staff were opening bank accounts on their own without working with the Treasury Department. So there needs to be some controls and balances with respects to banking activities.
And if you will have noticed, we do have the ability to change some things by ordinance. I mean, the charter is pretty general, and there's also a lot of treasurer's duties that are in our code of ordinances, especially regarding to sales tax and some of that, those different natures. So that would be one thing I would be looking forward to if you become city treasurer is to try and review city treasurer's duties and if we have adequately described them in our charter and in our ordinances. Are you aware -- this is -- that we are looking at potentially changing the pay structure for city treasurer? I think it was on the application. I think it was on the application. How much time, having looked at this, do you envision would be required to do an adequate job based on the duties as currently described?
I've listened to many of the council proceedings and the study sessions of the last several weeks. I'm aware that the council is considering changing it for the next elected positions term. And I've also talked to Mr. DiTullio with respect to what the actual time commitment is. As I understand it, it is a part-time position. I'll be honest, I'm a full-time employee in City and County of Denver and I work a lot of hours. But I've also secured with my management the time necessary, I think, for this position. I'd imagine that it would be between 15 and 20 hours a week, talking to Mr. DiTullio, listening to everyone's discussion about the position. I think that's about right. And I think that I will be able to put that time in. I plan to come and be in office at least one day a week for the full day plus several half-days, especially when I first get started as far as learning the position and getting things rolling. So that's my plan if I were to be appointed to the position. I'm not sure exactly long-term how much time it would take. If it needs more, then I would definitely inform the council and city manager of the time commitment necessary to fulfill the duties. But at this time, as far as what I know and understand about the position, I think I should be able to handle 15 to 20 hours a week in this position.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Thank you, Chris, for applying. One question I had was relating to the need to moderate or arbitrate hearings relating to this position. Can you speak to experiences you've had in that role as being a moderator or an arbitrator of facts?
I have not had any personal experience in that role. In Denver, we have a similar process for the, if you want to protest the amount of property tax, for example. So I've helped as far as the assessment division, working with them to identify who those taxpayers are in order to kind of protest your property tax statements. You have to pay the property taxes. So I do the accounting related to those protests and coordinated with the Treasury, or sorry, the assessment division as far as protesting those. So my experience with related to those types of activities are primarily on the accounting side, not on the, let's say, arbitration and actually working those cases. But I am familiar with the process and I believe that I would be able to evaluate the rules and effectively and reasonably make decisions.
And then going back to David's question regarding your employment with the City and County of Denver and potential employment with the city of Wheat Ridge, just getting down to the brass tacks of it, how would that work? Would that work with the city Wheat Ridge be done during the day while you're at the City and County of Denver? Would it be done here? And how would you deal with that sort of bouncing from one spreadsheet to the other?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, actually. I would do a lot of remote working, I think, on weekends and nights when I'm not working for the City and County of Denver. As I said before, I plan on being at least in the office one day a week here. I think being here and working with the team and getting to know them is really critical as far as one's success in this position. I work remotely quite a bit in my current job. I work from home a couple days a month. So I'm kind of used to that remote working aspect of it all. Once I become familiar, assuming I get the job with the duties, I think that a lot of it could be done remotely. And when it just can't be done, I'll find the time and just make it in.
And then just as far as your involvement in the community, I understand that you have been working with the Carnation Festival Committee for quite some time. Is there any other positions or services that you've been involved with within the city?
Not specifically within the city of Wheat Ridge. But if things don't work out for the treasury gig, maybe I can talk to my friends in the Cultural Commission and see if they'll let me participate in that team. I am looking to become more involved in the community, one way or the other. And my involvement in Denver Arts and Venues and kind of the arts and the cultural programming there, I think, would also lend well to that team and that group. So we'll see.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
So I think you mentioned one thing, and I think Patrick had mentioned it too a couple times regarding Section 3.10 and a lot of it's around the supervision of staff, that that's really not in the job description any longer. And I think, Patrick, you've confirmed that as well, correct? That, I mean, as far as like job, you know, he doesn't do the reviews and those types of things. He probably works alongside them and the work, but as far as the general supervision of staff, like it may have been many, many years ago, that's not the case.
Yeah, correct. That was switched in, I think about 2002 is when the treasurer at that time was resigning and recommended to the city council at that time that the staff should be managed and supervised by full-time staff instead of elected official.
So I'm just curious. So from an accounting perspective and some of your audits at the city, have you uncovered some things? Can you give an example of something that, I'm going to use the words generally accepted accounting principles, have you uncovered anything in your work in the City and County of Denver? I mean, you don't have to get, you know, air their dirty laundry or anything, but, you know, something that might show some expertise?
Well, one example of some things that I discovered while working in the treasury division in the cash management section is that a couple of city agencies, we discovered their own bank accounts and essentially kind of usurped the city process from recognizing your revenue and your expenses. All expenses and payments need to be made from appropriated funds. You just can't open a bank account, put checks in there and start writing checks out. So we found a couple of those that were improperly managed. So we had to close them down, bring them into the city and make sure that they were managed properly by a city bank account, again, following all the PDPA requirements and so forth.
And then I think you answered my other question in your list as far as the importance of making sure the transparency is out there with our community and getting the information out there. And I do think that sometimes reports in different manners, if it's grids or pie charts and those types of things are helpful to folks. So thank you. And I also wanted to thank you as well for coming tonight because I know putting yourself out there is always tough. So thank you for doing that, too.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
No, I was hoping you were going to repeat your question.
Okay, well, I wanted to make sure that council had covered all the questions. So thank you very much, Mr. Miller, for coming tonight. I will ask you the question that I asked Mr. Stites. If you were selected to this, have you formulated an opinion as to whether you would run for reelection in the fall?
Absolutely. I think I would. I don't think that I would be here tonight if I didn't want to run for this position, unless I get run out of town. Hopefully that won't happen, but I'm definitely interested in continuing this position. I think that, like I said before, it's something that I can do and I can do very well. So I'm excited about the opportunity to give back to the community in this matter. But if it doesn't work out, then perhaps there's other opportunities for me to give back to the community in different ways.
Well, thank you very much. So if there's no more questions of council for you, I would like to thank you again and excuse you. And we will get ready to move on to the next one, but thank you very much. Mr. Stites, thank you very much for coming.
Patrick, can I ask you just a general question? What, you know, as far as time in the office, what do we generally see of the treasurer? I mean, I guess we didn't, I mean, I, you know, we asked one candidate that, and I don't know what the general expectation is. So, you know.
You know, it's, I've worked.
I mean, I've heard, you know, I've done my little, I've done a little homework before that one. I've kind of talked about it in general, and I've kind of heard a little bit of everything that, you know, sometimes some folks do a day in the office, some, you know, a lot of people do work remote. I mean, there's not a general expectation of like set office time.
No, no, that's correct. And I've worked with, I think, four different treasurers since I've been here, and it was different for every one of them. So depending if they're working full-time or not, and a lot come in on the weekends, some at nights, some come to more council meetings than others. So it just all depends on the situation.
All right.
Not eight days a week. All right. Very good. Well, we will finish with, that completes agenda item number one. We will go to item number two, the Arts Space Feasibility Study. And we have members of the Cultural Commission, if you would like to come and join us at the table. Happy to have you.
Hi, I'm Diane Robb, Chair of the Cultural Commission, and it is my privilege tonight to introduce you to Arts Space. I first became aware of this organization about six months ago when I attended a forum on art and real estate. Since that time, I have researched this organization and presented it to our Cultural Commission. I think you'll see in a few minutes why we are so excited and will share in that excitement. I have spoken to a number of you personally, as well as members of the community, and the response has been extremely favorable. A number of cultural commissioners are here this evening, as well as Krista Lewis of Local Works. The Arts Space representative is here tonight to share with you the potential opportunities for Wheat Ridge, and you will then start to understand our enthusiasm. Let me introduce to you Ms. Shannon Jorn with Arts Space.
Thank you, Diane. Is this? Yep, okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Diane and the Arts Commission for inviting me to meet with you tonight and introduce Arts Space to you, share a little bit about, talk in more detail about our pre-feasibility study process and answer your questions. Arts Space is a nonprofit organization, and we have been around for about 35 years. We are actually based in Minnesota. Our home base is in the Twin Cities. We work all around the country. I'm happy to say that I now live in Colorado. I've been here for three years. I'm the one Arts Space person on the ground here. And so again, we're a nonprofit organization, and it is our mission to create, foster and preserve affordable space for artists and arts organizations. We are known for our work primarily as a real estate developer. And so we have, to date, developed a total of 50 projects around the country. We have about another 15 in our development pipeline. These are all different kinds of real estate projects that serve the creative sector. We're very well-known for our live-work housing product, but we create a lot of different kinds of space for the creative sector. We have done a lot of mixed-use work, mixed-use work. Our housing work is workforce housing, and we use finance tools that are geared for the creation and preservation of affordable housing. And we also have in our pipeline more than 3 million square feet of non-housing space. So this is working studio space, performance space, exhibition space, retail space, collaborative space, you name it. We, again, we are a nonprofit, and so our style of working in communities is to be invited. We are not a developer that's out looking for the next place to be, but rather, this is a very patient community development process. And so we wait to be invited. We wait, you know, somebody picks up the phone and calls us and we start a conversation and things go from there. So I was happy to meet Diane last fall when I presented at a Colorado Business Committee on the Arts Real Estate Forum panel. And she came up to me afterwards and introduced herself. And then I had the opportunity to make an introduction to the full Arts Commission. And it was just a sort of general overview of who we are and what we do. But the Arts Commission is seriously interested in taking a first step with Arts Space, which would be to contract with us to do a two-day feasibility study. And so this process for us is, can be the first step in what may lead to an Arts Space project, but we frame it frankly as a standalone piece that is more or less a fact-finding mission for us and for you to learn more about your creative sector and what their needs are and what the opportunities are for shoring up the sector, whether that leads to real estate development or not. And so the process is to come and we would work with the Arts Commission to plan a very full, active two days where we would be conducting focus groups with various different groups from your community, having a big community public meeting, and really looking at six different criteria area that we know are important for basically assessing what's the what and what are the opportunities in Wheat Ridge. And those criteria area are project concept. We're trying to gain a sense for, you know, is there some potential for some kind of real estate project and what kind of project would that be? We are trying to gain a sense for who is the creative sector in Wheat Ridge, so the arts market. What are the creatives and working artists in your community? Who are they? And what's the demand from them around space or otherwise? We want to gain a sense for how much your local leadership is interested in meeting the needs of your creative sector. We're trying to gain a sense for what are the local or state financial resources that could be put into some kind of effort? We are looking at potential sites for possible real estate development. And then we're also trying to get a sense for what are your other community goals and how might an arts-related development project line up with other goals? Other goals can be all kinds of things from affordable housing to historic preservation, economic development, and overall just arts support. And so this pre-feasibility study is again a two-day process. It's very intense. There's a lot that goes on in those two days, and then we go away and we write a report. And we give that product to the client. And it can be a standalone piece, and it often leads to a next step. And for us in our process, that is a far more in-depth online arts market study, arts market survey, where we get a lot of true statistical information about, from the creative sector, around what they need. That helps then really drill down what might be possible in terms of a real estate project. But again, this first step, this pre-feasibility study is, it's really, again, it's a fact-finding mission, and it can lead to lots of possibility, whether, and it may lead to, again, a next step that Arts Space is involved with, and it may not. I can talk about a lot of examples where, and I can share one in particular. The town of Avon in Eagle County reached out to Arts Space, and it was the town administration that reached out, and they said, you know, we've got this historic building and we got to do something with this building, and we think it would be great as an arts space. Would you come do some work with us and assess the viability around this potential? And so we did our two-day process with them. And interestingly enough, the primary outcome of that process was they were a community that really needed to spend more time sort of building community and doing some organizing within their own, around their creative sector. They were, we felt not ready to do development work, that we suggested that they form an arts council and that they do some work organizing their creative sector first. And so that's just an example for how this two-day feasibility process can illuminate a lot of different potential, and it's not necessarily real estate development.
You shared a story with me when I was speaking with you in your cohorts about the city of Lakewood and how they had done the feasibility study. And as it turned out, there was all sorts of wonderful opportunity and whatnot, but part of it was the affordable housing aspect of it. And Lakewood did not meet those requirements and thus has not pursued anymore with Arts Space. It's looked at frequently, but nothing- It's looked at frequently, but nothing has gone forward because the affordable housing aspect of it was not there.
Sort of. And...
That's why I have you here.
Sort of. That's, it's not, that's not quite right, but, but it, I think the, the point being that this is a process that, again, if, if the city of Wheat Ridge with the Arts Commission is interested in really looking closely at your creative sector and gaining a sense for what does the creative sector here need in order to thrive? And what, what are the, you know, infrastructure pieces that need to come together in order to stabilize and support and potentially grow the creative sector? You know, that's what it's all about. It may be that you find out that there's opportunity for development and that as you're in the conversation with other private developers about doing work in Wheat Ridge, you now have some information about your arts and culture community needs that you can articulate to a whole development community, for example.
Could you address, could you address a little bit about the, the affordable housing aspect that, that goes into it and a lot of the financing that's involved with that?
I can. I would say that's getting the cart before, before the horse a little bit. If we were hearing in this process that artists in Wheat Ridge really need housing, if that comes through in the study and that's often why we're invited in, we're really well-known for our work in affordable housing. And so oftentimes, communities are, are looking to ArtSpace to help come in and stabilize a neighborhood where artists have already congregated, but perhaps the, the market forces are changing in such a way that artists are being priced out and, and they need affordable workspace, affordable housing, housing space in order to stay there. That's, you know, again, that's something that we learn in, in the pre-feasibility process. And we know how to do that. As Diane said, we, we manage, own and operate about 2,000 affordable housing units across the portfolio. And we, we know, we, we know how to assemble complicated financial budgets, capital budgets, with a lot of times anywhere from 10 to 15, 20 different financial sources. We rely on the low-income housing tax credit tool primarily, but we're used to using other, a lot of other financial tools, affordable housing tools such as Home Dollars, for example. But we also bring in a lot of private philanthropy as well as other tools. Again, it is, this, the first step that the Arts Commission wants to take is the study to learn more and then have a sense for what steps might make sense to meet the opportunities that, that are fleshed out in the study. Does that make sense? I'm happy to answer questions. There's a much bigger picture around what we do, but I want to stay focused on the pre-feasibility study process and what's, what it's intended to do and what, what often comes out of that.
Thank you very much. Nice presentation. We'll go to questions. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. I really appreciate you being here and explaining this process, but I did have one question because I noticed that in your preliminary feasibility visit that you recommend for communities with populations of more than 50,000 and an established base of local support. However, we don't meet that by about 20,000 people. So how would the process be different in our community versus the other ones that you've been in?
I, I think that, that's a little irrelevant. We, we, you know, we're doing a lot of work in communities that are smaller than 50,000. In fact, you've maybe heard ArtSpace's name in relation to a statewide initiative here in Colorado called Space to Create, where we are working with the Colorado Creative Industries Agency from out of Oedipus and Department of Local Affairs and the Betcher Foundation as a collaboration to see these kinds of arts development projects happen in rural communities. So currently at work in Trinidad in southern Colorado, population of about 9,000, and Ridgeway in Uray County, population 900. The work can be done in any size community. The piece about local support, however, is, is important and that's one of the criteria area that we would look closely at in a two-day study process.
Just a follow-up question. So what does that process look like? Like, could you just give a general overview of that two-day process?
Yeah, so we would, you know, we, we, again, we're, we're waiting, we're waiting to be invited in. So in this case, it, it would be, it would be natural that the Arts Commission would really be the community partner, working with us to help us plan these two days. We can't, we, we need some help on the ground so that we can get all the right people together for the, for the, for various meetings and conversations. But it's a, it's a really busy two days and it includes, oh, I want to say, three to five different focus group sessions. And we're going to bring different groups from different sectors together. We want to invite folks from the arts sector to a focus group. We want to invite folks from the local government to a focus group. We're going to invite folks from the local business community to a focus group. Folks from the, who represent sort of the local financing sector to a focus group. We will have already identified sites, potential sites, whether they be existing buildings or vacant parcels that could be available for redevelopment or development. We, we want to walk around and tour your creative sector as much as possible. We want to know what already exists, exists here and, and how either, you know, arts organizations or creative businesses are currently meeting the needs of the creative sector. We want to get to know the community in that way. We'll have an evening public meeting, you know, open to the public. We want a larger group of, from the community to come and, and hear a presentation about who we are and what we're doing and what we're trying to learn so we can get more feedback. And, and that, that's essentially it. It's really a deep dive into, again, conversations with various segments of your community and, and exploration of what exists and, and a sense for what might be missing.
Ms. Davis.
I just have a question. So as you know, we're close to a lot of communities. And, and I think that, I mean, we have a lot going on around us and I think there's a lot of times we partner with other communities around us and, and would there be any, like, a part of this, would, a part of this ever consider some of the communities around us or would it just be just the Wheat Ridge portion of it?
I think that would be, we're very, that, that's possible. And, and so if, it's sort of up to you. If you're interested in really looking at Wheat Ridge and Wheat Ridge only, that's one path. And if you're interested in bringing other nearby communities into this conversation and looking more broadly, that's also possible. We're really flexible in how we can do what we do and how we can help you figure out what might be, what might make, what's, what's the most strategic process for you?
Well, I know Diane in that group would know best, but I just wonder if the more, you know, and I know, I mean, you basically said, hey, we've got, you know, towns of 900 or 9,000, but I just don't know, do we need to come in more robust or, you know, or, you know, depending on, you know, what we need to bring to the table? But not that we're not already robust, but, you know, but that team knows best, but I was just curious.
I think that we could have more conversation with you about that and tease that out more. I, I wouldn't worry about, I don't know if it's about robustness. I think if you, if, if you already have strong relationships, especially around your arts sector, creative sector, with, if there, if it's a natural in some ways to collaborate with nearby, other nearby communities, that, that could make a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay.
Additional, additional questions? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for being here and the rest of the Cultural Commission for being present and I appreciate what's being presented here. And I had just had a couple of questions regarding the differences between the, the population sizes in which you're working and, and how that relates to the types of end products that are produced. And from what I can tell, it's, you've got sort of one segment, which is helping arts communities develop as themselves and grow the, the arts community and the particular community. And the other side is the real estate development. So with a city of the population size of Wheat Ridge and looking at some of your past projects, what's the likelihood that that would result in a, a real estate development project versus a focus on developing the arts community as a whole?
So I wouldn't, you know, it, it's a, a natural question to ask about sort of population size and how, how, you know, how that relates to the final product. But you would be surprised, I think, that, to, to see, see what that really looks like. And so we, we really get a better sense for actual size of project when we go into the online arts market survey step, which if, if everything made sense to everyone as a, in the sort of result of the pre-feasibility study, that would be a next step. But in, for instance, Ridgeway, in the town of Ridgeway, town of 900, when they went through their arts market survey process, they had 500 respondents, which is a really strong response. And we do, we apply our formulas that help us get a sort of, you know, we, we, we're very confident then about the number of units that we think can be built to support that market. And so in the town of Wheat Ridge, that project is a mixed-use project with 30 units of affordable housing. And, and, and that's going to be a lot for that town. It will be a, a new construction project right downtown on, on Main Street. It also includes about 3,000 square feet of sort of multipurpose community space and that, again, relates very directly to the results of the, the arts market survey. And seeing that community space for all sorts of purposes, sort of meeting space, exhibition space, program space is truly lacking there. So that, that's, that's, again, how we got to that particular project concept, but that's a, that's a pretty sizable project for a town that size. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is actually a question more directed at staff. Have we conducted any kind of studies of this nature in the past or anything similar?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So what would the prelim, sorry, preliminary feasibility study cost us?
It's a $25,000 scope of work. We, you know, we see communities do all kinds of things to bring resources together to, to make that happen. And it is sometimes municipal dollars, sometimes it's donated contributions, and sometimes communities really work to pool funds for this first step.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? We'll go to Mr. Urban.
Mr. Mayor, this question may be for staff. Would that expense be eligible under the Public Arts Fund or would there need to be from some other fund?
I believe our Public Arts Fund is only for acquisition, so it would have to come from other sources.
Thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
So in the event that you guys do this feasibility study and we don't move forward, are we just out that $25,000 then?
Well, yes, but you have your results. So you, you know, you, again, we, you got to want to take the step to have the results of the study. And we're going to help you sort of strategize around what's possible with those results. And we make recommendations about whether or not, you know, what direction this all might go in. Does it, does it make sense to move forward with an ArtSpace arts market survey? Do you have enough information to potentially start talking to other developers who are working in your community about, hey, we also know that there are these needs for this crea, for our creative sector. Would you consider including creative space in your development? You might have some thoughts around meeting space needs within your current business community. So that's the product.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you for coming and sharing. Question about the commission and, and the discussions that you guys have had surrounding this and perhaps if there was consensus or, or direction, you know, that, that specifically the commission is, is recommending or asking for or where you're at in your discussions.
The Cultural Commission has discussed this a number of times. We, I first brought it to the Cultural Commission and said, "Look what I found." Everyone was very excited and said, "Let's bring them in and talk to us so we can get a better feel for it and whatnot." After ArtSpace left and they did their presentation, the Cultural Commission as a whole felt that we would love to move forward with this. The Cultural Commission has become very relevant in the past couple of years. And the more we do, the more we discover that there is a much larger arts community here in Wheat Ridge that any of us ever thought or knew about. And we keep discovering more and more artists that actually live here in the city. And we look around at our neighboring suburbs. Krista, you were talking about, Arvada, this past year finally formed an arts commission for the first time. And they have always had the, the art center, which is very, very successful. Lakewood has a very successful art center. Golden is starting to be known as an arts community. And we feel, the Cultural Commission feels as if we have the potential to be right up there with them, just we have never taken the steps to formulate anything or really put anything down on paper. And so that is why we were very excited when we discovered ArtSpace and the commission as a whole would like to see us move forward with this. as a whole, um, uh, would like to see us move forward with this.
Ms. Dozeman?
How large do you think our creative sector is? How large do you think our creative sector is?
I can't answer that. I, I would, and if any of the other cultural commissioners haven't, it would not surprise me if we had a minimum of a hundred to a hundred and fifty artists here in the city, both full-time and part-time.
So what kind of a need do you see within that community for affordable housing? And what do you envision as far as a, a creative space?
Personally, what I see is that, um, there is a need for affordable housing for the creatives. There's also a huge need here in Wheat Ridge for, uh, a community space, and I'm not talking just about artist studios, but I'm talking about a space that can be used for theater, for dance, for, um, just as an example, Wheat Ridge Reads. We had the most successful Wheat Ridge Reads, where we had over thirty people attend, um, just one event, just one event, and there were two other events that also pulled a large crowd. And, um, and we struggled as a cultural commission to even find a meeting space for something like that, beside, you know, besides just the rec center.
Uh, Mr. Pond?
Well, if I could, I'll just make a couple of observations and, and comments, um, in reaction to it. Um, I, I think, um, I'm intrigued by it. I think it's, I think it's a great presentation, and I, and I agree that the commission is, has been activated by a number of forces, uh, good leadership and great participation, um, certainly as part of it. Um, and I do think it's interesting, um, that we're finding kind of another vein of heritage in, in the community, which is our art, arts heritage as well. I think that, and, and I think we've heard that from you over, over the last couple of years, and that's very interesting to me as well. And, um, you know, on a personal note, you know, I have a couple of girls who I'm sure are not watching this, so I'll brag about them anyway, um, but, you know, they, I, I can see, um, artistic talent and, and hope that they will, will follow that. But, you know, providing, like you said, community resources and, and activity and momentum for that, um, I think would be important. Just their dad telling them, um, to do, to do that is, is not quite enough, but I actually, I honestly see it in them, and, uh, and I, and I hope that our community can, can stand up, um, to meet that at some point. Um, I, so I, I support this. I don't know, I think there's some other things that probably need, need to be discussed, quite honestly. Um, I, I feel like, um, there's some pieces about this that are exploratory in the same vein as the, as the NRS work that's going on, and I think that there, it, we would be mistaken not to properly dovetail that. Um, and, and I think that's, um, that just is, it takes some conversation perhaps to understand how it might be dovetailed appropriately, so that, um, we're leveraging the engagement and information that we're getting from our NRS committee and, and data that's coming out of that to then perhaps tie, uh, this, you know, this pre-feasibility study, which kind of takes another, another stab at, um, at, at getting some data that, um, likely will, um, either support or, um, find where, um, we might, you know, we might be able to achieve, um, you know, even more success than, than we're, we're seeing right now. So I support that. Um, uh, you know, I, I'm not, I don't know exactly how it moves forward, but, but, um, I'm, I'm intrigued by this. I think it's in alignment with a lot of the work that we're doing in the, in the community right now, and would be a good, um, a good add to that.
Ms. Davis?
Um, I, I just wanna, um, add on to what, um, Mr. Pond had said. You know, it is something that I support. I know I've, I've spoke with a few of you, um, about the project. I, you know, what comes to mind is it kind of goes back to that kind of private-public, um, sector type of relationship that we need to create, and, and I think it's hard to kind of do the study without also trying to find that relationship of that private pub, public sector relationship. Um, what comes to mind is Fruit Dale. Uh, like Fruit Dale would have been like, perfect, um, because that would have been like perfect, uh, had we had known this a few years back. Um, so, and that gymnasium and all that, perfect. Uh, so, um, but I think we need a relationship like that, and I also think we need to develop our even, you know, like, we have some prominent developers i- in our city, you know, even like Wazee, who, you know, they're, that, you know, they're familiar with some of the housing credits and, and, and those types of folks that, um, that are familiar with those types of credits that, that would probably help, um, with, uh, if we have a study going, and, you know, they might be willing to partner with us on a parcel that's identified. But I think, I, I think that those are kind of discussions that we, as, um, community development, as, um, as a city, probably need to also start making those discussions before we say, okay, let's go and, um, do this study. It's almost like we need to also have that partner there with us if this feasibility study does come out to say, hey, um, yeah, it looks like we do have an opportunity here. We need that partner there. We can't just go, oh, we have an opportunity here, and uh-oh, you know, now what? Um, so it's almost like we need to bring them together at the same time versus, okay, let's just pull twenty-five thousand dollars out and hope for the best. I think we need to nurture both those relationships at the same time. So I think it's something we need to explore, um, more on, and I think, um, and I'm sure by the looks of Diane and, and the looks over my shoulder, it sounds like that's things that you guys are working on, and, um, I would just say that I would like to hear more of some of that other, um, those other relationships that we know we have other folks on board that would help it come to fruition, if indeed, after this study, we have like some marching orders that we could actually take it and do something with it.
Um, I just want to add that we, um, the staff at Art Space is, um, you know, it, we, we're pretty, uh, easy, and so if Diane or others wanna have a next conversation and, and, and kind of get more into the nitty-gritty, and you wanna brainstorm more about the kinds of things you're talking about, we can, we can, um, again, we can help in the participation of that conversation around who, how to be strategic, and, and who else makes sense to bring into the process.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Uh, thank you, 'cause it's interesting, 'cause Fruit Dale also cropped right into my mind, and I'm reminded a few years ago that there was a gentleman that came up and spoke to us several times about wanting to turn that into an arts center, in a commu- central, in a community center, and everyone seemed to turn a deaf ear to that. Um, I'm not sure why. That's several years ago, and I was just in the process of coming onto the council. But he wanted to use the gymnasium for a ballet school or what have you and other dance things, and no one seemed to be interested at the time, which I think we, we missed an opportunity, 'cause now we just have another apartment house. But that being said, um, I was thinking about this, and you know, and we look back at, um, art and art history, and at some point in time, I bet you about a hundred and ten percent of it was all based on somebody's largesse, is, if that's the right word. I mean, they went to the king, they went to the pope, they went to somebody and, and got sponsors. Um, I'm not sure we're quite in that league yet, but, uh, I would be in favor of pursuing more information at this time before we get down to promising money. I would also ask that you perhaps seek some business partners, um, in, um, within existing confines of the cities. For instance, I noticed Local Works has represented tonight. Perhaps they might be willing to forego some of their budget to help with the feasibility study. Um, I think probably better served there than some of the things that we do do, uh, as far as creating a lasting, um, impact on the city. But, you know, I would, I would perhaps suggest that we explore a correlation of some of the money that we already have in our budget for development of things, and perhaps we can eke out a few dollars there without having to, and, and get a coalition. Maybe the council gives some, 2020 gives some, Wheat Ridge Business District, if they, if it works within their confines of their, um, constitution, could help work with this project. I think if we get a cooperative effort from all of these groups, they're supposed to be in charge of developing the city and developing our image, um, it would help broaden your base, and it wouldn't just be the Cultural Commission pushing for something, but you'd get a, a lot better, a lot broader base in the, of, of support in the community if we can work on some of those coalitions.
The various members of the Cultural Commission have started reaching out to a number of different people. When we first started talking about this, we recognized the fact that it would have to be community-based, and the purpose of coming to City Council tonight is to introduce everyone here to the concept of what we are talking about, how we would like to proceed, and yes, we would love to have it community-based. We would love to have all sorts of different organizations involved, developers, uh, business owners, many, many different venues. Uh, we did bring in Local Works right from the start, and, um, the director is here supporting us. Not that she's ready to write a check, but the support, the support of, let's look at this. This could be a very, very strong, uh, community venue. And so we, that is what we want to do, exactly what you are speaking of, and exactly, Kristy, what you are speaking of, and it is our goal to inform City Council that this is what we are working towards, and, um, we will, as the Cultural Commission, continue to pursue it, to pursue partners, to pursue other people that would like to, um, uh, come along for the ride, so to speak, with us. And, uh, it is our goal also to have City Council be aware of this, know that we're excited about it, and to also start talking about it, because the more people that can talk about it, the more resources will come to the surface. And that just leads then to a successful project, whatever that may be. So we are at the ground level, starting to look at it. We are hoping for City Council to, um, encourage us and say, go forth and, and keep developing relationships, and we're hoping City Council will keep us in your mind when you are talking to various developers or organizations or venues about, this is the end goal. No, you cannot, uh, write a check tonight, and we wouldn't expect you to, but we do want you to be behind us in, let's seriously look at this. Let's bring in all those different people, all those different organizations, and then we'll know what's right. And with that, I thank you for listening to us tonight, and I thank you for any support and outside support, as all of you are out in the community, to talk about it.
Thank you. Before we're done, I, I wanna go to Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, you know, I guess, uh, I don't wanna consider Wheat Ridge a blank canvas, but in, in, in this project, we're kind of looking at a blank canvas, and so it's always difficult to figure out where to start, and I, I think this is one color or, or one medium to use, and there's, you know, trying to figure out where on the landscape it would go. And the, one question I had as far as, you know, different ways to approach this is understanding what our other options are with respect to, uh, solidifying and codifying, uh, the arts community within the city, and, uh, understanding the, the costs and benefits of whether it's feasible to do a, a creative arts, a creative district, a certified creative district, or whether there's other tools, uh, that we need to be looking at, and understanding that sort of, before we look into a feasibility study, to make sure that that's the best, you know, tool to be using to paint our canvas. So that, that's one of the questions that I, you know, I'm not really understanding at this point as far as whether tools might be available to us, not necessarily competitors or other, uh, options like that, but just trying to figure out what's the best first step in, uh, solidifying this and giving us, uh, you know, the best chance at success. And to speak to the Fruit Dale project, the, the, there were several feasibility studies done, and the reason that the project that was presented was completed was because the capital stack for that particular project was the only one that was available, and the, the gentleman that came to speak spoke without any money behind him, which is pretty easy to do. So, uh, that's it, something that we gotta keep in mind, is that anybody can, uh, paint a good picture, but can they sell it? Uh, so that's what I think, uh, we wanna look at as well, is, uh, the, as much as twenty-five thousand to me seems like a, a huge chunk of change, what is the net end result of increasing our arts community within the city, and how does that help with economic development? Because as you look at Ridgeway, they might have nine hundred permanent residents, but they have several thousand, uh, seasonal residents in, uh, a very large region that is, uh, very arts-centered. So, uh, it's, it's important to kind of look at those aspects of it. So I'm not in any way, uh, opposed to spending the money to do this project, but I, I wanna make sure before we do that, that this is the best step forward, uh, for us and the best way to spend what limited money that we have. And at this point, just looking at the budget, I don't know that we have any money dedicated for a feasibility project of, of this kind, but I, I rely on staff to tell us exactly where that might come from, and so, uh, I'm supportive of continuing to push, uh, for sort of codifying and, and coalescing our arts community, and a, and I think a project like this would help do that, but I just need to make sure we're going in the right direction.
And Mr. Matthews, did you have a follow-up?
Well, if everyone's kind of ready for consensus, I'd at least perhaps like to just, um, either offer it as a consensus or just kind of a organizational statement. I would be in favor of consensus, consensus to commission, the Cultural Commission, if you would, that we're in favor of pursuing getting more information on this issue, and that you go forth and multiply in the city and find folks and more support, and, um, perhaps even not just financial, but moral support, and then come back to us with a preliminary report on your findings, on you've got, you know, the 2020 or, or Local Works, um, Business District, the, what have you, um, are all in favor. Um, Carnation Festival would like to work with you on something perhaps, you know, at the next carvation, you know, to help promote and get, start getting publicity and public support out on the front page, and then, and, and when you're ready, come back to us with, um, perhaps more concrete details.
That was in form of a consensus. How does the council, uh, view that? We have support for that, so, uh, and, and along with that, we would, uh, express our thanks for a terrific, uh, presentation and a very interesting program, and, um, we've, got some real, uh, direction to go there, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't know if you all have seen the Colorado Business Committee of the Arts, their 2017 Economic Activity Study. There are some very strong numbers in here showing the economic impact of arts and culture within a community, so I will, I will, uh, share these with you.
Thank you.
And thank you, City Council.
Thank you very much. Before we go on to item number three, I'd like to take about a five to a seven-minute recess. recess. Okay, let, let us reconvene our City Council Study Session for February 14th. And we are going to item number three on our agenda, Discussion of the Procedures for Appointments to Boards and Commissions. And we have our attorney, Mr. Dahl here. Mr. Dahl, I will, and, and...
Yeah, I'll start it real quick. So we, our annual Board and Commission reappointments are coming up. We have that scheduled for, shoot, I have that open here, I think February 25th, yeah, because we have a, a number of them expiring in March. And City Clerk's Office provided me with the spreadsheet that's in your packet. But there's also been some, over the last year or so, some discussion about wanting to know more about how our boards and commissions and authorities members are appointed. So we just did a little bit of research, Mr. Dahl and myself, put the relevant charter and code and state statute sections in your packet and we can go through that kind of quickly here and, and take any questions that you may, may have. So, Mr. Dahl?
Sure, sort of an outline for structure, pardon me, that you start obviously in Wheat Ridge and with the Charter. And that's in, in Article nine of the Charter says that council's got the authority to, to appoint boards and commissions. Interestingly, the Charter says the representation on boards and commissions should be approximately equal amongst council districts. When you go to the code, the code is tougher than that. Of course, the code's within your control, but the code says with some exceptions, it's got to be equal, you know, two persons from each council district. And then it makes exceptions on, in specific boards and commissions as you have the authority to do, because you've got that latitude under the Charter. Approximately equal means that you can, you can move things around a little bit. And in the past, you have and your each, each board and commission is a little different, but you start with that basic rule, which was changed a little by the, by the code. Both the code and the Charter talk about the creation of boards and commissions, which trigger into this approximately equal or equal representation. And then you've got other animals, frankly, and you have, you have several of those, three of which come to mind as authorities, which aren't boards or commissions. You've got two statutory authorities that are based in statute, not in the Charter, not in the code. That's the Housing Authority and the Urban Renewal Authority. Now, the Urban Renewal Authority has a code parallel as well, and that code parallel kind of parrots the statute in terms of, of membership. And then you have the Liquor Authority, which is not a statutory animal. It isn't mentioned in the Charter, but it is a, is a code-based authority. You've got a, the section in the code. And that happened as a result of the, the council was the Liquor Authority many years ago and found itself in a position of having liquor hearings and the, that nobody else cared about, but the audience had to sit still for, for a huge liquor hearing. And so the, the council created a Liquor Authority many years, years ago. So the, the distinction, I guess it would make would be between the boards and commissions that are reflected in the, mostly Chapter Two, and you've got all those code sections, and the authorities, which are reflected either in, in the, in the code, but reflect statutory material or in the example of the Housing Authority. There's not a code section on the Housing Authority at all. There's a resolution of the council from 2001, acting under the authority granted to you by statute to create the Housing Authority. For the Urban Renewal Authority and the Housing Authority, those appointments by statute are required to be made by the mayor with approval by the council. And so you're, both your code and statutes follow that rule for those two particular animals. The others, to my recollection, I think all the others are just council appointments. So that's, that's kind of a broad brush, kind of sketch. There's a lot of detail for each commission, each authority. There's a section on voting rules that's important primarily for Planning Commission when they're voting on land use matters and for the Board of Adjustment voting on variances. And we can get into the weeds on any of them, but as I understood it, your interest was primarily, you know, how are these entities, how are the members of these entities appointed? And that's a real quick thumbnail sketch of how that happens and what the, what the basic authority for those appointments is. So.
All right, we'll open for questions. Mr. Matthews?
Kind of a point of order here. We need probably figure out which sections of the codes dominate because in 253A, it says that no elected official should be on a board or commission. And we have that for, I know, Housing Authority and, and Urban Renewal, and I don't know if those are different animals, but it, the Housing Authority is considered a board by definition.
Actually, it's considered an authority, a statutory...
Somewhere in here, it says it's a board. And I read it in the resolution, so I don't know what governs.
I will tell you, the, the, the code's full of those kinds of conflicts and absolutely the way you, you resolve a conflict like that is the specific controls the general, controls over the general. So if you have a general section that says, here's a rule, and then you have a specific section that departs from that rule, you, you are governed by the specific section, not the general section. So in the places where a city elected or appointed official can serve on a board or commission as a result of that specific code section, that overturns, but you've, you've identified the, the potential conflict, but that governs over the more general statement in Code 253.
Okay, additional discussion. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I look at this, I, I think it'd be helpful, just as that discussion happened, that the code or in some other way that we were to codify, this is what an authority is, this is what a board is, this is what a committee is, and these are the recognized entities within or surrounding the city of Wheat Ridge. Because as I look at it, we also have, you know, sort of ad hoc and defunct committees and ones that are coming online with respect to the Community Advisory Committee, the Outside Agency Committee, the Budget Oversight Committee, the NRS, the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee, but yet those don't have the same sort of oversight or sort of structure to them than these other committees do. So I'm, I bring this up to kind of look at the, the open records requirements and the sunshine laws that, that affect these types of committees and when do those laws apply and when do they, when do they not apply? So I think it would be helpful if we had some sort of codification of this is what it means to have a committee and the sunshine laws apply to it in this way, because we can have any number of things and slap the word committee on the end of it and all of a sudden, we've got a decision-making body. So I just want to make sure that we have some kind of structure around that and also an understanding for those that are applying, what the expectation is of that particular role or their ability to serve in that role. Like for instance, with the Liquor Authority, there's certain employment restrictions on that. So how would we go about doing that as far as codifying those various entity descriptions?
I think that's frankly, a really good, good suggestion. Over the years, I've had to, you know, answer a question about this board or this commission and each time I have to work my way through the little labyrinth that we have that Council Member Matthews identified, you know, because there are, and, and in the end, you can resolve it and you can come out with the answer. But if there were a, if there were a chart, if there were a grid that, that had the, the body, how it's, what the membership is, the length of term, how it's appointed, how vacancies are filled, and whether or not subject the open records law and open meetings law, and probably two other columns that I haven't thought of. But, you know, I've done grids like that for financing districts, comparing and contrasting between DDAs and LDAs and PIFs and TIFs and, you know, the various kind of alphabets who kind of financing arrangements. And, and I found that really helpful because then at one glance on a line, you can, you can tell yourself what that means. And it also, I think, would identify places where we have unintended consequences or conflicts. You know, and over the years, in each case, I've usually been able to come to an answer that I believe was fair and was true as far as what the code required, but it, it was sometimes not an easy process. You had to come to this and realize it was overturned by that and, but modified by that, but you needed to check the statute. And, and probably over the years, I've done that on, on all of those, but I've just never written them down in one place. I think it'd be a good idea.
That's a good idea, although, you know, we now, we now are sort of less than 30 days out from when, when our appointments lapse. Or have we, have we gotten into a time bind or do we have the ability to extend the time or accomplish that? Or do we need to accomplish that in order to appoint the boards? And I, I just kind of digress, but I want to go to Ms. Davis.
Well, I, I think from the looks of the table, we need to extend the time because I know that it looks like we don't have applications. If, I mean, if this Excel spreadsheet is up to date, it looks like we don't have applications on some. And, and so I don't want to be caught in the situation where I was caught last year where I had recommended someone who turned in a late application and someone turned in an on-time application. So I definitely want to clarify like, like what to do next because we have some, some areas that there's no application submitted. So are we going to say, okay, so for these positions submitted now, we're... So are we going to say, okay, so for these positions submitted now, we're going to accept those? And then are we going to extend it for all applicants? Or, you know, I guess, how are we going to move forward now? Because now we're gonna change the rules, and I don't want to change the rules, because heads are gonna roll. But we have vacancies. So I think that, we don't want vacancies either. So I think that we need to definitely look at the list we have, and at least extend for those areas that we have vacancies. So I think that we have to at least do that part.
I don't perceive, and others may feel differently, but I don't perceive that creating this grid that says, here's the structure of appointments and how they're made, et cetera, et cetera, has to happen before your, the vacancy filling cycle.
No, I agree.
Has to be addressed, you know, because you, by and large, I think the staff and city clerkship is pretty good about knowing what the requirements are for membership. You certainly could choose to extend the schedule for those boards and commissions for which you don't have applications, or you're gonna feel that you're sitting up on the dais without enough people to consider for appointment. Separate question, almost.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. But I think also extending the schedule, how are we going to handle that? Because we're changing the rules.
Well, I don't think we're changing the rules. And I think what the chart or the matrix that Mr. Dahl is talking about would be just really an.
No, I'm not talking about the chart. So I'm sorry. I brought something else up, so I don't mean to do that. But I think that, speaking of deadlines, our deadline is up, and we still have vacancies, and we don't have applications. So I'm sorry, I was speaking to something else. So our deadline was February 1st, and we don't have applicants in some of the areas.
To answer your earlier question, Christie, I did get an updated spreadsheet from the deputy city clerk this morning. So there's a couple more applications, but yeah, there's still quite a few vacancies.
Mr. Keeter.
First, I was just, I was aware of at least one application that came in after the spreadsheet, so what Patrick was saying. But as to the question as to, do you extend everything, or just the ones that you don't have applicants for? My understanding is that the Liquor Authority's been having real problems filling the positions recently, and that they've actually not had quorums at some times. And so that almost sounds like it may be a particular nut to crack that may need some kind of extra measures, whether it's fiddling around the district requirements, like Jerry was saying. But so I guess my initial thought is that for the positions that we have applicants, that we proceed as planned, and then take stock of what we have left and what we might have to do to try to encourage people to participate.
Mr. Matthews.
Is there any statutory rule that would say we can't, like as Councilman was suggesting, elect or appoint people now, so those boards or committees will have the benefit of the membership they need? And then just say we are reopening for vacant positions again, and make a deadline of May 1st or something to give people time, whatever, February, March, April 1st? And just set a new.
Readvertise for the positions.
A new deadline, so that, and then if we don't fill all the positions, then we advertise again for vacancies.
Sure. When you think about it, if, just because the term is ending and there's a vacancy, if you're not able to appoint it, it's still a vacancy, and you fill vacancies midterm, you know, all the time. So really, it's just some leftover midterm vacancies, or really just vacancies that you fill, and we advertise those midterm. Nothing wrong with advertising another set of them. Regarding Liquor Authority, another thing for council to consider, it doesn't have to be at any particular time, is there, many cities go to hearing officers rather than the full-blown Liquor Authority, and just take, hire someone as a hearing officer to hear liquor cases. The city of Wheat Ridge uses hearing officers for some code enforcement matters, uses hearing officers in the treasurer's office. There have been times when the city treasurer, for whatever reason, has wanted to use a hearing officer instead of the city treasurer to conduct the hearing. So the use of a hearing officer in kind of a specialized area, liquor is a specialized area, is appropriate. And I'm not saying you should do it or not, but I'm saying it's an option for you for an authority if you're really having trouble filling it. Now, your planning commission, you're not ever going to be able to go to a hearing authority or hearing officer, because that's a structure that really needs a public, you know, needs a commission. The Liquor Authority, you could migrate to that if you chose. But to answer again Councilmember Matthews' question, absolutely. You know, you do what you can, and if there's still some vacancies, those are vacancies, you fill them like any others.
Additional discussion. Mr. Urban.
This is a question of the city attorney, as it relates to the residency requirements per district. I haven't looked through each of these footnotes, but is it, are there certain boards that have a specific residency requirement and others are more general, as it relates to the, you mentioned that estimated amount, or?
Yep. I'm trying to recall, and again, this is why I frankly do need the chart. The general rule is residents in the district. Well, of course, where it says, appointments have to be two from each council district, then that's residency. There are some exceptions. I think it's in Code 253 maybe even, I forget where. Where it was 10 years ago, it was clear that it wasn't going to be possible to get somebody from a district, and the code actually now says, because the council put it in, where after reasonable efforts, you still can't get someone from the district, then someone from another district may be appointed, and that, so we have that flexibility. There are a few situations where, for example, in Urban Renewal Authority, I believe there's a non-resident business owner that is permitted to be on. So that is an example, again, of you taking the flexibility the charter gives you when it says approximately equal, and applying it in circumstances like the Urban Renewal Authority where, you know, you really do need to adjust it a little bit. I continue to draw, because the charter draws a distinction between boards and commissions and other kinds of animals, and those other kinds of animals would not, except if you provide by code, and many times you have, would not have to be equal representation from districts. That's a time-honored and important tradition in Wheat Ridge that I wouldn't ever suggest you depart from. I think it serves you well. But you're not required to stick with that, and you have some code flexibility, which you've used, and you could use more of it.
Is that even the case for the Liquor Authority? So if?
Yeah, it's not the case for the Liquor Authority. You could, for the Liquor Authority, you could populate it almost any way you wanted. I wouldn't recommend that it be anyone other than a, you know, Wheat Ridge resident on the Liquor Authority, but it wouldn't have to be, you'd have to change your code section, which right now says, you know, two from each council district, I believe.
So it doesn't allow the same as it would for boards and commissions?
Yeah, for the Liquor Authority, you could depart from that entirely. In the code, you've stuck with that rule, but you're not required to stick with that rule. You could have, instead of eight members, you could have five, and instead of, you could make any change you like, or you can go to a hearing officer. Because it's an authority, not a quote board or commission, and the charter language on boards and commissions is specific to them.
Okay, so let me clarify, because I, we had an applicant that applied, but our position's open for the Liquor Authority. So he would not be able to be appointed by, like, District One for the Liquor Authority, because he's District Two. So like, if District One couldn't find somebody, they couldn't appoint him because he's District One, is that correct?
District Two.
I mean, because he's District.
That's correct, because the little code section on, hey, if you can't find someone from this district, you can reach outside of the district.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
Right now, it only speaks to boards and commissions.
Okay, I'll.
So you could do one of two things. You could expand that, say boards, commissions, and any other authority or committee, et cetera, which otherwise has residency requirements. Then you'd give yourself that flexibility, or you'd just tinker around with the code section on the Liquor Authority itself, either way.
Okay, I'll have to email them.
Mr. Urban.
To that point, though, that code would be speaking of those formed and directed by the city, and even if you were to put the word authority in, it wouldn't apply to the Housing Authority or the Urban Renewal Authority, because they're not a part of the city?
Well, their membership and appointment is governed by statute.
Sure.
That's, I appreciate your saying that. Saying is if we can kind of rewrite the rules, and you can, with the exception of entities that are set up by statute, and you're really only complying, you may only comply with the statute in creating them. And you're right about that. The Urban Renewal Authority and Housing Authority are statutory.
And maybe it's, those are capital As, and this is a little case A, or some way to distinguish between the two.
Statutorily authorized authorities, authorities authorized by charter or code would be a way of distinguishing.
Additional discussion.
After looking at the spreadsheet again, there's only five positions out of 15 that we don't have applicants for, so it's not as many as it may seem, so.
A third.
A third, well, yeah. But it could be worse.
Can always be worse. Additional discussion. Mr. Urban.
As it relates to the Liquor Authority, there's that employment requirement, and I understand the basis for that, but is that a statutorily defined basis? Or what is the genesis of those requirements?
Councilmember was referring to a requirement in the code that you not be employed by an entity that would otherwise have, would have a liquor license, basically, in the city. I'm not sure. I can hazard a pretty good guess that that would be statutory, because you'd have licensees on the authority that have, they'd have to do one of two things. Vote to either approve or not approve a license of a competitor, or recuse themselves all the time. I'm happy to check and see if there's a statutory basis. I would say, even if there isn't, I think it's a good rule.
And I do, too. And I'm just sort of trying to understand, you know, the lack of interest in serving on boards or commissions, or is it just, what are the obstacles to get people on there? And I'm not looking to remove that, and I understand the basis of that, but trying to understand people's motivations to apply, and the lack of interest to participate. And that just, to me, seems, trying to understand the various obstacles there, and I don't know if that's one of them or not, but I get it, why that's the case. And I don't know if there's other hindrances in other boards or commissions that are keeping people from applying, but that one's the only one that pops in my mind, that it's a hard obstacle. So I just would like to ask people to get out there and apply, and, you know, help our city out, because we need people to serve on these boards and commissions.
Additional discussion. Mr. Matthews.
253C, Mr. Dahl, is where it says, if you can't get enough members, then you can go outside the district and go for it.
Yep. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Well, we have a path forward. We've got this on our schedule for February the 25th, and we have applications that will be coming with that packet, I assume.
Yes, we will. And, you know, we still have, we could ask the deputy city clerk to extend it until as late as possible, before the 25th, to see if you can get more applications for these other five positions. If that's the direction council would want to go, or just go with what the ones that you've received from the original deadline, and then appoint those and re-advertise, I guess.
Is there discussion on that? Mr. Pond and then Mr. Urban.
Well, maybe it's a combination. Just, I would prefer to try to extend, and maybe I'm missing the updated list, but I still believe there's, you know, one in District Three for Planning Commission, perhaps, that's not responded. I think that's an important one to get back out there. I have attempted to inquire from some of the last year's applicants, and so still waiting on that. To the extent that we don't get to the finish line, then, you know, I guess, per this discussion, I'd be asking to leave that vacant until, and to ask for, you know, to re-ask for applications with a new deadline, to try to extend an invitation versus filling the position with a different, from a different district.
Mr. Urban.
As far as extending the current application deadline, if it's for the February 25th meeting, I think the Monday before that would be an acceptable deadline that gives the deputy a chance to coalesce those and then get them into the packet for that Thursday.
Thursday.
But that would be sort of the latest, I think we would want to have that.
Mr. Keeter.
Just for clarity, are we just talking about extending the deadline for positions that there were no applications for? Or is it reopening everything so that people can submit?
That's a good question.
I guess, since I have the floor, I think I would be more inclined towards the former, and not potentially penalize people who have already come out and shown their interest for positions, and that for those that we consider the application period closed, but for where there hasn't been any interest, that we at least consider extending it.
So we would sort of re-advertise for positions that we have not received applications for? Ms. Davis?
Well, and I would agree, because if we're going to be consistent, that's what we have to do, because that's what we did the last time, because I know that I had nominated an application that was late, and we did not accept it because it was late over another one. So I think that that's, to be consistent, if we're going to be consistent, that's how we have to do it.
Mr. Matthews.
I agree. And, I mean, I don't think the advertising is any great, I mean, we put it on the website, and maybe there's a two-by-two block in one of the papers, so.
So is the consensus that on the positions where we had a qualified applicant, I guess, respond to it, that those applications would be closed, but we would re-advertise for positions that we, that are currently, we have no applications for?
Correct.
And to make that, to close the date on, did you say the Monday?
February 18th, it's a Monday.
Oh, okay. Mr. Keeter.
It's a Monday, but it's a holiday. Does that matter?
It does, yeah. Actually, we, our deadline for packet is usually that Friday before, so what's that, the?
15th.
15th, if that's okay. That would, for the 25th, it's usually 10 days in advance of when the packets do.
A week from Friday.
Yeah, so that's a week and, almost two weeks then.
Close of business on that Friday.
Yep. Okay, is that 15, is that?
Mm-hmm. And I have one other.
It's not what our rules say, but. It's not what our rules say? That's when packet things are due.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we should send out a new list, since you said there's a newer one than what's in our packet.
Yeah, I just got a little bit, I think there's a change on it, but we'll get that out to you.
Mr. Urban. Going back to what Jerry Dahl had mentioned about the code section that dealt with the allowing of applicants from other districts to serve on other boards and commissions, I would like us to consider, and I don't know what the best method to be to put this in, but as far as allowing applicants from other districts to serve in other positions that we don't have applicants for, specifically on the Liquor Authority and any other entity that we have that isn't included in the current language, excluding the Housing Authority and the Urban Renewal Authority as statutory.
Mr. Matthews.
Do we have to clean up to what happens thereafter their first term if they're out of district? Does that position, you know, even though they may want to reapply in the next election or the next appointment period, but because, I mean, should, I don't think they should be grandfathered in necessarily, that that position needs to be shown as a vacancy.
Absolutely.
And then if it's not filled again?
And it would be.
Then they could reapply themselves, but.
I agree. The way that code section's been applied, to my knowledge, has been for that term. You're from out of district, and that's great. When that term ends, it's a vacancy. When that term ends, it's a vacancy again, and you may well reapply, but if there are people applying within the district that are qualified, they, you're not eligible to be appointed. If there's going to be a rule, there should be a rule, and the exception is pretty limited, as you described.
Ms. Keter?
Patrick, are there any openings for which there are multiple applicants for a single?
Yeah, there is. On the newest list, there is maybe just one for liquor authority in District 2. The current board member, authority member, has reapplied, and there's also an application for that position. And also for Planning Commission, District 2, same thing.
I guess to follow up a bit on, Ms. Urban, the, we may consider if we don't get qualified applicants for another district, but we have somebody from, for example, District 2, who has shown interest in serving, we may consider using the kind of waiver procedure to at least get somebody who's expressed an interest in participating on the board.
The only problem is that one's an authority, so he'd have to change the rules first.
So I guess that's my question as far as timing is concerned, is that while we're seeking other applicants at the present, we don't have any, and that code provision doesn't apply to authorities. And I guess what I'm asking for is that we extend that ability to allow individuals to sit in a district seat that is not theirs until such time as their term ends, and there's an applicant from that district that is duly eligible to serve in that position. And that wouldn't necessarily be contingent on this, but it would help this sort of bottleneck here, that we have applicants that we can't consider because they're not in the right district, and we're not looking to make them permanent, but if they could serve until the term ends, and then if there's a more eligible applicant from that actual district, then those would be considered prior to the existing one. And I don't know if we need to, would that be in the form of an ordinance that we need to amend the code with?
Yeah, you could pretty easily amend 253(c) to write out, says members of boards and commissions, or just change the language, boards, commissions, and for that one portion of it, say boards, commissions, and authorities, exclusive of Housing Authority and URA.
So I'd like to make a consensus that we direct the city attorney to draft that, and that we bring it forward as soon as possible?
Well, I'd almost want to wait to see if the districts find somebody first before we do that, though. I mean, if there's a couple people that are going to go and try and find somebody, I don't want to draft that up, because I feel bad, because I know Lenny has asked for the position a few times, but I don't want to draft that up if we've got council people that are going to try to fill it.
Well, it seems like the liquor authority was somewhat excluded from that, not necessarily intentionally, but unintentionally, and there may be other situations. The reason that, why we did that for the boards and commissions was for the same reason that happened previously, so logic would suggest that it's going to happen again at some point. And let's say that we do get applicants and we don't need that, then that could be a vote taken on the dais as to whether.
Yeah, I'm fine in general just doing it, yeah, to change those, to make that change, that the authority could work, that the liquor authority can.
Mr. Matthews?
Just for clarification, too, yeah, if we were to ordinanceize the liquor authority, and that wouldn't really affect anything, but to clarify, if there are two people running for the same vacancy, and we've set a deadline for whatever, I think we need to vote on that, and then we're reopening then a new deadline for vacancies that weren't filled, and who, whatever person, say, from District 2 did not get appointed, would then be eligible to apply to go into District 3 or somewhere else, if that suited them. I don't think we should do it the same night. I think it should be after a re-advertising. Because then you're, then what you have to do is wait until all the votes are tallied, and now you've got leftovers, and you don't know if they necessarily want to go still serve or not. I think we just follow a procedure there, that they're available, they are then eligible to apply for another seat. And if someone else from District 3 would also apply that had not applied before, then they're still ineligible, but they could always apply for District 1 if there was still a vacancy there.
That's exactly how it works.
Do we need to change any of our rules in order to enact that, or is that the way it is?
That's the way it is for everything but the liquor authority, because they're an authority, not a border commission under that. So if you want to change that for the liquor authority, we can either do it in Code 253, or we could do it over in the code section specific to the liquor authority.
And is it the consensus of the council to deal with the liquor authority as an authority to make it more like a board and commission?
Yes.
Okay. And should we leave that to our attorney to decide what location would be most appropriate to put that legislation?
So as far as timing's concerned, would that be something that would be drafted into ordinance form and presented when?
Sure, I can do that properly, it's an easy change.
Janelle has something.
Well, I just wanted to share that currently on the liquor authority, we have a man who, well, what happened was, there was a, several years ago, there was a resignation in District 4, and we advertised and advertised and advertised, and no one from District 4, we couldn't get anybody, and finally, there was a man from District 2, talked to him about it, and he, so he applied, and then he was appointed to that vacancy, and then the next time, when there was application, there was, nobody applied for that spot again in District 4, so he's still on there.
And he may well.
He lives in District 2, but he sits on the seat for District 4.
And again, I think that addresses what we were talking about, is that actually becomes a vacancy at the end of the term, and if there's no one else from District 4 that applies, then he can still reapply.
And once we write the new ordinance, that'll be okay, but right now, it's kind of not okay.
I perceive that it just happened.
Yeah.
And okay, and you don't, I don't think you unseat someone.
Yeah.
But if we make the change, then there's an actual procedure to do what apparently was done.
All the more reason.
All the more reason.
All right?
All right.
Do we have other direction that we need to?
Was there a consensus on Zach's last consensus? Christie interjected before, was there a consensus on?
Yeah.
Can you repeat your?
Sure, that we make an amendment either to 253 or the liquor authority code to allow for the appointment of a individual not, individual not within the district that the vacancy has occurred, and allowing that person to serve that term, and upon the expiration of that term, if there's an applicant from that district, that, the individual that served in that position wouldn't be eligible to apply. And now, if there is none, if there is no applicant from that district, that person could reapply and continue to serve at the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Dahl, isn't that already, since it says, when someone's appointed out of district, they serve that term, and you can't kick them out until the term's finished, and they're allowed to finish that term, and I think that kind of does what you want it to do?
It does, but of course, it doesn't extend to the liquor authority, because the code simply doesn't extend that to the liquor authority. And what's on the table is, should we extend that rule to the liquor authority? And yes. And Councilmember Urban's describing what would happen anyhow if an out-of-district person were appointed under this new rule. They would only serve to the end of that term, and if there are qualified applicants in the district, then you can only consider them, because there's sort of a re-advertising process if the deadline comes, and, because you don't know that you're not going to have someone from the district until after the, it's closed, and now you have a vacancy, and then you do a re-advertising, and that's what you do. And so I've got the direction I need, honestly. Can I also ask for a direction on this chart? That sort of puts down in one place all of the various entities that you appoint and their characteristics. I think it might be good to have under our elbows, just as time goes on.
Do we have consensus for Mr. Dahl to?
Hold on, on that point, I guess the caveat you offered was those that we appoint, but there may be other committees and teams and gaggles of citizens that are coalesced by the city, you know, like a murder of crows, I don't want to come up with a, I don't know what that would be, but we always have these various committees, so I think there needs to be sort of a spectrum of, these are the ones that are appointed by council, and if they are not appointed by council, then they're an ad hoc committee, or they are something else, as long as we can kind of codify that. And I think that's important as it relates to the Open Records Act and the Sunshine laws, to make sure that we understand where those apply and where those are less applicable, just as far as the nature of that group or committee or whatever it might be.
Absolutely, and there's a mayoral appointment authority for certain ad hoc committees that has been used by mayors in the past, and we'd want to distinguish them. Okay, sure.
But we would look to you and your new chart to sort of be a comprehensive review, then, of all of the boards and commissions and authorities and other committees or things that we may have purview on?
Sure, Zach said gaggles.
Yeah, gaggles. That's, is that an official term, put that in? Okay.
Very specific term.
Thank you, I will do that.
Okay, is there other discussion on item number three? All right, seeing none, we will conclude that item. Item number four, staff reports, we'll start with Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, real quickly, I had a conversation with Denver Transit Partners today, just a quick update on the G Line and the A Line. Hold on to your seats, nothing too specific. They do have, I think their next report out, official report out is February 21st, but he wanted to let me know that December and January were probably the most positive months they've had with all the regulators, the Colorado PUC, the Federal Railroad Administration, so he feels that they're making great progress, but as always, not a lot of detail in their updates, but it's good news, I guess, that they're feeling confident, so. Yes.
I guess I would point out that the Federal Railroad Administration was closed for the month of January, so I'm sure that was a rather positive month for them.
Good point, good point.
No wonder it was positive.
Okay, we will go to elected officials' reports. Raise hands if you've got something to offer. Ms. Shaver? I never see your hand, but I want to make a, oh, Mr. Dahl?
I asked if I could join the staff reports for a quick direction on something. As you might recall, in 2006, the voters adopted Amendment 41 to the Colorado Constitution, and it had to do with ethics in government, and there was created an independent ethics commission, which had jurisdiction to prosecute ethics violations. Most recently, we've seen a case filed involving former Governor Hickenlooper, it's been in the paper, on those campaign contributions or some campaign funds, and that case is ongoing. That commission has sort of broad authority, and it is capable of receiving complaints about ethics violations, conflicts of interest, misuse of public funds, kinds of violations from local elected officials, as well elected and appointed officials as well. It contains an exception for home rural cities, though, which is good, and says it doesn't apply to home rural city that has adopted a charter ordinance or resolution on the subjects addressed by this amendment. So if you've got your own, to kind of simplify, if you've got your own ethics code and conflicts of interest code, the independent ethics commission doesn't have jurisdiction. This has meaning for the city, just within the last month, the mayor of Glendale, Colorado, Mike Dunneffin, was the subject of a complaint brought to the independent ethics commission by a citizen in Glendale alleging some kind of impropriety in office, and Glendale has its own ethics code. And so the mayor responded and said, independent ethics commission, the state-appointed commission, you don't have jurisdiction over my actions, it's only our local city code that governs that, and the Denver District Court agreed, but that's been appealed by the independent ethics commission. I'm convinced the Court of Appeals won't uphold that. So what we remember from this is, you're fine as a home rural city if you've got your own, your own system. Well, Wheat Ridge doesn't. It really only has two charter provisions, one on elected officials generally and one on the council. So one on basically the clerk and the treasurer, and the only other elected officials you have, and one on the, and the mayor, and one on the council, and they're really short. And they just say that you, you can't be interested in a contract, you know, or vote on a contract with the city, and you can't be employed by the city. And if you are, you have to disclose it, and the council takes some kind of action. But that really doesn't, doesn't live up to and doesn't really equate to a code of ethics that you will have on, that would describe, for example, what is a conflict of interest, what's done when that happens, who reviews those, are there, what about gifts and gratuities? The classic list of half a dozen topics that ethics codes cover when they're in a, in a city code. In other places, I've had the council to, in a hurry, just adopt an ordinance that says we hereby adopt, there's a statute that's pretty lengthy, but the problem is the statute talks about state offices and then city offices, it's a little messy. Most cities have a two or three-page ethics code that governs conflicts of interest, et cetera, that would address the issues addressed by the amendment sufficient enough to protect you from anyone walking in saying, I'm going to file an ethics complaint against Councilmember Dozeman with the state commission. This has been brought to light by this district court decision that was just handed down in January. Everybody kind of assumed, well, if you've got your own system, you should be fine, and the ethics commission apparently doesn't agree, I think they're going to lose. But nevertheless, meanwhile, the rule remains that you've got to have your own system, really, to be, I won't say immune, but to govern your ethics questions locally, rather than be litigating them in front of the state commission. And this is one where I recommend that you direct me to prepare an ethics code. It won't be, you know, miles long, and I'll be able to look at some others that I've done or that other cities have, and you'll be able to see it, and I would bring it here at study session so that you could see sort of what it contain, and you can end up having your own rules about things, so long as they're, you know, they're not actively encouraging, you know, elected officials dipping into the public, you know, fisc, but it won't be written that way. But if you have that, then if there is the complaint, it's not that it's a valid, not a valid complaint, but it's heard locally, and you have your own, typically, the council itself would review those, and then appeal would be to the district court or something, but you'd be kind of insulated from someone walking down the independent ethics commission in Denver and deciding to file a complaint against you because they are mad at you.
So we've been running bare for?
We have, that's true, and, you know, it's, a lot of people kind of assume that the independent ethics commission is really just going to look at state-level, you know, complaints, but this Glendale case really brought it to people's attention, that unless you've got your own system, you're a little bit at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Urban?
Thank you, I guess I'd be curious as to what are the components of an ethics code? I can see a burden of proof component, and adjudication component, and then a reprimand or sentence component to it, and I just, I'm not certain as to how you would set that up, so that is council adjudicating the ethics violation of one of its own members? Is the punishment for that, public flogging, a slap on the hand, a censure, expulsion, you know, the gamut of sort of penalties for that, or trying to understand sort of the nuances? of that. Is there any sort of definition of statute as it relates to, you must have this part, this part, and this part, and it must be conducted by, you know, this group of people versus that group of people? I'm just not quite clear as to how that would come together.
Well, frankly, not to that level of detail. The statute, which I worked on when I was the attorney for the municipal league in the late 80s, the state statute that a lot of people use as kind of a starting point, although because it is a state statute, it has more in it than you would use here. It frankly has some shoulds and some shalls in it. You know, you shouldn't do this, and you shall not do this, and there's kind of a list of things, mostly, you know, participating in items where you have an interest in one way or another. But there's a distinction between participating in something where you have an interest in a competing company versus where you're going to assist them or where you're going to not assist them, or where you're assisting yourself and where you're voting against the interests of your competitors. Interestingly, the state statute makes a distinction. You can vote against your competitors, that's a should. There should not. It's a shall not to vote to advance your own interests, which I've always found fascinating because the statute makes that distinction. For our purposes, I think I'd have a uniform rule, but typically, the appeal body is, or the body that makes the decision is the council. I think you'd want to say whether or not the member affected gets to vote or not. Often, that's kind of silent, and that's not good. There's kind of the list of safe harbors and the list of shall nots. What I'd be inclined to do is maybe develop less of an ordinance and more of a term sheet for what that ethics code would look like, and I think that'd be easier for you to absorb, pretty easy for you to give me direction on, and I can turn that into an ordinance. I didn't come prepared tonight with all those details, and probably should have, but it's not hard to do, and it doesn't get so detailed that you, like, rules of criminal procedure, kind of, it doesn't get that far, and you don't have to get that far to be, to take advantage of the constitutional exception for home rural cities.
And I just obviously have no issues with providing that remedy. It's just understanding how does that get laid into law and how that gets carried out and protecting against the misuse of that, as we've seen with the state commission, as we all thought it was going to be limited to the state, and either they've run out of unethical people to look at, and now they're coming down to us, or they are just real go-getters, whatever. But the, I guess, as I look at this, it's trying to understand, as we look at the ethics, is it ethics relating to financial concerns? Is it ethics relating to other types of concerns? Or is there any kind of delineation between financial and non-financial? So if I'm serving on the Jackson County Housing Authority Board and there's a matter concerning them, even though I don't have a financial interest in the matter, how does that come out as far as ethics? And that I'm not personally benefiting, but there's a matter being brought.
Fair question. I will say, the fact that you're on different boards and sometimes you change hats and now you're on this board and that other board is here in front of you, no problem. It's all, it's public work that you're doing, and as long as there's not a private financial interest, no problem. The categories generally addressed by these things are your own personal financial interests. Usually, it's a follow the money kind of analysis in the main, which would include your own personal financial interests, companies you're involved in, properties, you know, that you have investments in, for example, campaign and election funds use, and that's where the Hickenlooper complaint is, and sort of family conflicts of interest kinds of issues. And those are really the main, three main categories, I would say, of issues that these ethics codes look at and define, and the other relationships you have in the community and with other groups that come to the council that primarily aren't financial, that really, when you look not only at the statute but the case law, it's really a follow the money, I'm using the All the President's Men analogy, if you, those of you that are in the parking garage, follow the money. Remember that? That's where it's from. That's, once you've addressed that, you've gotten most of it done. And I'm happy to give you some examples in a way that you can get a sense of, this isn't a giant, it does not, it won't envelop your entire lives and roles as public officials at all.
So is it the consensus of the council that we should have our attorney, just, let's call him Deep Throat, work on a conflict of interest?
It was Hal Holbrook.
Okay.
Consensus. All right, is it all right?
There is a consensus on that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doll. Okay. Any other business? I will, next Saturday, the second Saturday with the mayor, nine o'clock, Vanola's Restaurant, if you'd love to come, I'd love to have you. So come and we'll talk. And if there's no more business, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.